Get it started. It looks like it's Danny or Larry, would you like to introduce it?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, if I can, talk a little bit about the two topics and to let everyone know that we have essentially taken the, we're going to take these two topics in 30-minute increments, but certainly if we need to speak longer on one, just we'll continue to keep the dialogue moving forward. But the first item that we're going to talk about, that we're going to present to the mayor and council, are really some concepts on recreational facilities. And I know that all of you as a council receive the type of inquiries and calls similar to the staff about the capacities that we've got transpiring primarily with what I would consider to be baseball softball fields, as well as multi-use soccer, football, and the like fields within our community. Obviously, we have been a growing community and we are beginning to see some increases at our capacity levels related to the options that we've got available. I've got Danny Gallegos that will present to the mayor and council on the specific scope and then ultimately I'll speak a bit about potential financing options for the mayor and council to, for your consideration and talk through the next steps on both of those. But with that being said, I will, I guess I would also say one additional item before I ask Mr. Gallegos to begin his presentation. We obviously, from a timing perspective, have finished the community services master plan that really drove some of the information that we're presenting. Danny and his team have been doing a fair amount of research of what the approach to other cities within the state of Arizona are utilizing to deal with the capacity issues that we may be having with these various facilities. One of the key elements and an important message that I want the mayor and council to consider through all of this is obviously we're seeing costs for all construction of many of our infrastructure projects increasing, certainly at a rate that is much faster than what we're seeing. The interest rates is an example on any type of debt financing that may be available. And so with that, I'll ask Danny to start his presentation and then I'll pick back up when he's completed.
Thank you, Larry, Mayor Fitzgibbon, and members of the council. I'd like to start with this first slide. If you recall about a year and a half ago, we went through a master plan for community services. It was quite an extensive document. You can get it online to look. These are just a couple of concepts were brought up. A lot of what we're doing with the master plan is upgrading a lot of our facilities, plans to do those types of things. But two of the master, or part of the master plan were concept plans. Right now, the city does not need additional land to develop. Right now, we have areas that we should be developing first. And a couple of those areas are at the Paul Mason Ed Hooper Park area. As you can see on this first one, this is the first master plan. You can see our current baseball fields and softball fields and then the rodeo grounds below that. And then to the west, you can see another clover leaf, which will be a term you'll hear from time to time. It's an easy way to explain four fields with parking, additional multipurpose fields that we can use for multiple sports and then open turf area for special events possibly. And then racket center down below to the south end. Now, we are getting pickleball courts, as you know, at Dave White, so that might not be as needed as much in the future. Now, as I go through this, it won't include all of this, but this is the concept for the future. As you look at to the other side, you can see where our existing recreation center is and then the aquatic center to the, just to the south of that as well. That was the concept plan of where the next one should go. When you put a pool next to an existing recreation plan, you save on a few things like front desks and things like that and possibly including some locker rooms that can be utilized, both for the internal and the external. But, and then again, it would be used year-round as well or determined on what council decides they would want to do for future use, but would include a heated pool. Just to give you, oops, wrong way. Just to give you an idea, this was just presented to you, I just think a couple of council meetings ago, about the city survey. And these are just a couple of things that they ranked, the recreational facilities. And as you can see, the swim complex, which we would call aquatic complex and multipurpose fields are at the top of the list. So just a little bit of reminder, that's why I threw that in here. And this next slide, I just want to talk a little bit about the capacity. I know you hear it all the time, but this kind of gives you a little idea on what the staffer dealing with. Luckily, they've recently put in a field allocation guide. They did that originally for best practices, to keep it fair on when you, when you can, how you can rent a field, when you can rent a field, keeping as fair as possible. Well, it's coming to play where it's helped us and helped the community, club teams, coaches, leagues, rent facilities, just to give you an example of what it's like to rent a field Monday through Friday. If you wanted to rent O'Neal South on Mondays since January 1st, it was one day available for you to rent that field. It was taken 21 of the 22 days. O'Neal North, another example, Thursdays, there was one day that you could have used, or there was a day open. Sometimes that's Mondays usually because there's a holiday, so people don't rent it as much. But if I showed you this other list, there's very few days that you can, especially Monday through Thursday. Friday, there's more opportunity for you to rent the fields and Saturdays and Sundays, there is more around too. But with this community, there's so many people trying to practices, different games because they have other things going on the weekend. But that's the biggest time of when we have people requesting fills. Right now, staffer jig, chixaw puzzling, where to put people, where to put the kids. Usually it's on a daily basis, but the fill allocation has helped us to determine these fills. Just want to give you some ideas on some of the areas. These are new complexes that are in different cities throughout the valley that have been open for the past year. So here we have City of Avondale Aquatic Complex. This is a $29 million project. And you can see the, I don't have a lot of pictures for the facility. It's quite a big footprint. It has a large lazy river. This is the smaller slide area, zero depth, and you have the bigger slides in the background. This is the City of Surprise Aquatic Complex. Now, that's being turned over to the City of Surprise, May 1st. I actually spoke with the CIP person that works for the City of Surprise. And you could see down at the bottom, that does include a firehouse. That's not included in the price of this $31 million facility, but there is a little bit of park space over there. That's the concept plan they originally started with. This is what they have now. And you can see some of the slide areas as part of the recreation pool. Now, we have Town of Queen Creek. That complex just opened up last month, I believe, March. Am I correct in that, Brandon? Last month. And it was part of a $72 million project, but that included the recreation center, similar to what we have now. That's why I wanted to include some of these areas. It does have a teaching pool, little lap pool. It has a zero-depth area, slides, lazy rivers, which I'll show you here in just a moment. This is the lap pool that they have. This is also a year-round pool that's used by Water X people and it has some diving well as well. Diving well as well. And it also has the extensive slides, lazy river as part of that. That, that project was also done with the different bonds that we talked about that we're looking at. This is the only one that's not done the same way, the financing part of it. This was just a sample that I wanted to share with you. This was Legacy Sports of what it looks like to have two clover leaves next to each other. They're connected where you can walk back and forth, some of the players and families. This is actually Red Mountain, City of Mesa. This one was done about a year ago. This was a $27 million project, included this clover leaf, softball field, baseball fields, the parking areas, the landscaping, the infrastructure. And it also included these fields here you see to the left-hand side. Those are actually City of Mesa fields. So that's something that we would look at. They don't look as well-defined as you would see some of the fields. You want them that way so you could make fields go in any direction you want. It helps some of the pitches get pretty damaged from all the planes, so you can actually move them around. So I just threw that other picture in there to give you an idea of a clover leaf next to some multipurpose fields. So this is, we actually spoke with a construction company, one of the construction companies that actually built Surprise to give us some ideas of what some of the costs will be. And they gave us some different phased areas because when they gave us the original numbers, we thought that, you know, going into different phases would be the best option for right now. Because to build out this entire area would be pretty extensive. But if you look at the red area over where the clover leaf is with the parking, it kind of looks a little like a, looking above the Starship Enterprise if you kind of look at that. And then you have the parking and then the multipurpose fields over there. And that would include the infrastructure, roads, parking, hardscape, soft gates, and amenities. Total cost estimates about $39 million for those particular areas. Now, if you look at the estimates for the aquatic center and we took those numbers, they gave us the numbers for that. We took those numbers from some of the things that were being done for these current pools. Now, obviously, our areas, our footprint's a little bit different, so that will also, you know, depend on what the infrastructure will cost. The parking, entrances, exits will all have a matter. And of course, when we get down into what it is that we want it to be and what kind of play features we want. And that would be the infrastructure, main and recreational heated pool. So it's recommended that if this goes through, if there's a decision we ever build these pools, that the main pool and the recreational heated pools be separated. Part of that reason is because the main pool can be heated separately so you can have year-round, more year-round swimming, lap swimming. We also have four high schools that utilize our current pool right now. So those teams are growing as well, so those are hard to fall to even. They fill the lanes up. And locker rooms and amenities with a total cost of $27,700 are the estimates coming back right now. That includes the infrastructure costs. That's where I'm at right now.
Thank you, Danny.
Any questions with the mayor and council on the scope of the projects? And obviously, the cost estimates, I, we want to stress that this is, we've not had any level of design. This is more of really trying to take today's construction costs and ultimately overlay that in the scope, which can obviously be adjusted, but does include the amenities that you would need with the parking and the restrooms and those types of things that would normally be necessary to facilitate those types of facility uses. So if there's no questions on the scope itself.
Any questions? Go ahead, ma'am.
If you go back to the picture of Paul Mason.
Sure.
For lack of a.
Here.
So what you're saying is just the red and the orange, but not the blue.
Correct. That would be a different phase.
Because we were talking about that and I didn't know how far we could get with our money.
Those two areas are about $39 million now. Does it mean that we can't get in an extra multi?
Would it be possible? Yeah, I was thinking if we could add that field in the blue, maybe, the multi-use fields.
And that's always a possibility.
I mean, because the cost jumps up, but it's not, it's not going to get you cheaper, right, Brandon?
Right.
You know, if we could maybe add one more set of fields, which I know we're not doing details right now, but I would, I would like that, yeah, something to look at.
I, trust me, I've, I thought of that, the same thing there. I'm like, well, let's look at, would the costs come back, the design come back? But if we can add one or two more fields at least, if not three more fields, that would be beneficial. And if we can somehow connect them to have more playing space. Because sometimes I think, actually even Brandon said the other day, sometimes we have to look not where we're at, but where we're going and where our city's going. I mean, we talk, you talk about that in planning and zoning all the time, but it also includes recreation on what facilities are going to be needed within five to 10 years. Because even if these are still a couple of years out, if everything goes according to plan, moving forward. So that's something to think about and look at for the future.
Which is why it's good you had your master plan done, Danny.
Exactly.
If we get more than those two phases done, it would be a benefit to the community. More playing space would help the youth of the community.
Did you have a question, Dan?
Well, I did, but I think you just answered it. So the basic project that we're talking about tonight would be the $39 million plus the $27?
Yes.
Okay.
Rough estimates.
Yeah, those are rough estimates. The, this particular phase, we did ask a construction company that built Surprise to give us some preliminary costs based on what their experience is recently. And so there's some of the numbers that have come back. But obviously, we don't know what's underneath there at this point. And when the design comes down and the connections, that's where a lot of the work's going to come in. You know, you think it's just clear the field and throw some grass down, but there's a lot of infrastructure that needs to go underneath there for the sprinkler systems. And the type of, type of grass that you would want to have there takes a little bit more than just throwing it down.
Right. And it's funny that you say that because I get it all the time. Why can't you just get a field and put some grass on it and let people just play out there, you know? So obviously, it's not that easy. But, but no, and to your point, as far as, you know, this was a master plan. It's definitely something that we've been looking at. We know the need in our community as we continue to grow. And we know the importance of, you know, kids playing, you know, sports and, you know, being active and, you know, away from their phones and interaction and, you know, with other children. So we know the importance of this, but obviously, it's how we're going to pay for it. And so, you know, that was definitely one step to see where we are, to put together the master plan. And so now, you know, all of us have been getting, and we, and we see it, you know, I mean, we're out there, plus we're getting people that are constantly coming up to us and asking us when we're going to move forward on something in this master plan. So that's why we're here today, the discussion, to see where, you know, where we are, how we can finance it and just kind of get estimates of what the cost would be. So Larry, you were going to go ahead and give some feedback on that.
Yeah, if I can, Madam Mayor, thank you. And I just want to make a point of clarification for everyone here and watching. When you talk about one block of the multi-use fields, Danny, that's actually three, that could be three soccer fields in one box.
Right.
So if we were able to expand to the next box, that would inevitably be six. I just want to make sure that everybody understands that.
Yes, and it looks like one field, but really it's, you can put three side by sides against there. And if you're talking about five-year-olds, you can probably put 20 fields out there.
Danny, I got a quick question for you. Is these fields, you know, as Matt was saying about going ahead and trying to price estimate this extra field in there that's in the blue? I know in construction, sometimes if you build more, the second one or the third one could actually, it goes down in price because they're already there, they're already moving dirt. They're already get the water pumps in place, they've already got. And so the expansion, I would just encourage you to look into what the price estimate, if it goes down in price on the extra fields. You know, adding an extra field is, it's actually cheaper to, on that third field or whatever.
And that's definitely something I'll look into when we get, if we get to that point of getting those estimates. What if we do this or if we don't, can this include this cost? It's definitely something I want. It's something we did with the pickleball courts and we're in that current discussions now. And we do, definitely do it with that. Because if we can get more fields, even if it were just one more, one more field would be a benefit to the community. Getting three would be ideal.
Just, just keep in mind, if you add more fields, you need more parking, too.
We need more parking, we need more maintenance, we need more people, we need, yeah, all the above, absolutely. But, but like you said, the price isn't going down, so.
No.
Yeah, this concept plan doesn't mean that the fields can't come south of those multipurpose fields. This is a concept plan. So if you put that parking over there, you could move the open turf area to the west and bring those other fields down possibly so the parking can be utilized. Because part of my thoughts were too, is that parking right there, maybe we don't need as much if we only have three fields. But if we do some more fields and bring them down, we could possibly include that in the parking. So those are ideas.
Do you know typically which costs more, the parking in the roads, the streets, the parking structures, and all that kind of stuff, the lighting? Or is it the actual fields with the sprinklers and stuff like that?
You mean what costs more?
Yeah, which on your, in your experience in the past, when you're building these things, which, what does most of the money go to? Does it go to the parking, the lighting? Or is it the actual sprinklers and the grass and the maintenance?
The infrastructure, getting it around the fields itself. The fields itself, the, just the field is probably about $8 million. That's including the lights. So it's really getting to the point of putting the grass down and the dirt down, the rock, the things. That's the bigger cost, is the infrastructure cost, getting things done. So, and that, and when they did these estimates, they based some of that. And when you look at some of their infrastructure costs, that's where a big amount was. Originally, when we got some numbers back, they said, yeah, the fields are about $8 million for that, for that clover leaf. But then when they brought back all the infrastructure costs, that's when it rose considerably.
Questions yet, or Larry will go through the?
Sure.
Go ahead, Larry.
Yeah, Madam Mayor and members of the council, I'll spend just a few minutes talking a little bit about the finance options that might be available and what we've looked at from general obligation, specifically from a general obligation perspective. And I think that it's important because of the timing that we may be on. I want to talk a little bit about budget authority in general and ultimately project timeline. And I may need Mr. Gallegos to assist me with that, but the last item. But in these particular cases, we really have a few options that we can pursue. The City of Casa Grande has always looked at attempting to, what I would consider to be pay-as-you-go, assemble the cash and build. Just to give the mayor and council a context, we would be utilizing funds that may be generated through development impact fees, perhaps construction, sales tax, and the like to build a project of this nature. But if you consider just the estimates that have been introduced tonight, $67 million for what has been proposed with the four, the four baseball softball fields, the three multi-use fields, and an aquatic component. To give every, to give everybody in the, in the audience and listening tonight, to give you a context, we have been collecting development impact fees on similar types of amenities for a number of years. And we've roughly collected about $8 million. So that will show you the difference between the revenue streams that ultimately are being collected through development in contrast to the costs associated with building a complex of this particular nature. So you immediately begin to think that it's very likely going to be a project that we're going to need to pursue some level of financing for. And there's really been two mechanisms that the City of Casa Grande has used over the years. One, that is based on sales tax dollars, that we're pledging sales tax dollars. And we've built some facilities in the community utilizing those types of funds. In fact, the Paul Mason Sportsplex and the Aquatics Center that was built in 1997 was done under that particular scenario where the council would increase sales tax for the life of the bond and ultimately would use that to pledge against the, against the cost of the project. The second, I will say that that is certainly an option that remains available to the mayor and council today, but all of you just went through our budget retreat a week, well, less than a week ago. And you hear the demands that we're facing with other types of capital infrastructure, such as roadway improvements, right? That's going to be, when you compare the need and the roadway improvements that we need to make and expansions, ultimately, those are going to be a lot more than what we're even seeing today with our recreation facilities that are being proposed. So that brings us to a general obligation. And the mayor and council is well aware, well aware of the fact that Casa Grande has utilized general obligation bonds very strategically over the years. And, you know, in the past number of years, we've used them specifically to, in 2006, there were a number of questions to build, the rec center is an example, to build a public safety facility. In 2020, our voters supported us in levying secondary property taxes to ultimately build the roadway infrastructure on Treckland and McCartney that is underway today. So you'll see that we've had some support by our voters. The important difference is that one is a, one is a sales tax and one is a property tax. And in this particular case, general obligation bonds require voter approval. It's levied on your full cash assessed value. Some of the good things that I would like to report tonight on that particular funding tool is that, number one, in 2020, we went to the vote, or was it 2022?
2022.
2022, excuse me. 2022, we went to the voters. And since 2022, we have seen, as we had anticipated at that time, we've seen very dramatic increases in our assessed value, values in the communities because of the growth that's transpired. And so what that ultimately does is establish an authority, a capacity that ultimately the city could pursue in general obligation bonds. And will provide, if that's the tool that we're so directed to move forward with, then we ultimately will provide more detail on this. But our, our capacity limits have moved in 2022 from $128 million of total capacity for projects into fiscal year '25 of $255,000, $255 million. So it's almost doubled in size as far as what is available to capacity. Obviously, the, there is a, there is a, based on the amount of debt that's issued and the like, and there's a variety of items that we can look at as we put together a financing plan for this. For example, we could take some of that development impact fee and apply to drive this down. Where we're actually borrowing less money, as an example, could be an option. But essentially, what we're finding is that our secondary property taxes, and which is 100% used to pay for the debt for those projects that the voters have approved, ultimately has dropped as well over the years. We are going to, we are proposing as a staff a slight increase this upcoming fiscal year, fiscal year simply because of the amount of debt that has to be serviced. And as you issue that debt for the various projects, they, there's an amortization scheduling. They, they come due at different times, but there will be a slight increase in this upcoming fiscal year. However, the amounts that have been proposed and what would even be proposed in this particular scenario have been less than what we've anticipated as we've issued debt in the past, less to the property owners on the assessed value of their homes. And so I can get into a little bit of detail if you'd like. Where really, a lot of this depends on the sizing of the bond. Do we want to pursue, do we want to use the general obligation as the option, as an example? And if so, do we want to buy that down with development impact fees? We can give the council specific numbers if the general obligation route is the route that we elect to move forward. But I think it's important to let everyone know that general obligation bonds can only be taken to the voter for their consideration on a November ballot. And so if, for us to be able to make a November ballot in 2025, the mayor and council ultimately will need to call for an election on May the 5th. And you would need to pass the resolution that establishes the scope, the question that voters would be considering, which would talk about the scope of this project and would also set a limit of what we would be able to, and capacity that we'd be able to pursue if the voters were supportive of this particular question. And so there is a lot, there's some work that needs to be done in the next couple of weeks, if that's the route we're going, compared to a sales tax that ultimately can be considered in a variety of manners, but, and can be taken to your voters if you'd like to take it to voters at different ballots. And so the other important message that I want to point out, and Danny was right, we've done a fair amount of planning for these types of amenities over the years with the community services master plan, as well as with the design concept report of Paul Mason Sportsplex, Ed Hooper Park expansion in general. But there's not been any type of civil design that's been done on any of these. And so if we're, if we were going to pursue a project of that nature, there, we would have to design both of those projects, starting from scratch, that ultimately take, adds time to a project schedule. And I, Danny, I'm going to maybe ask you to opine, but, you know, this is something that if we start today, you're probably looking at 24 months plus before you begin to get to a point that you can turn on the lights and step on a field or get in a pool. And that's just best-case guess, I mean, at this point. But, and obviously, I mentioned a minute ago that budget authority becomes important. I don't necessarily know that there would be a number of changes that we would be proposing to the fiscal year '26 budget that we just introduced to the mayor and council. Maybe we would include the design, as an example, into the, into the budget. But as far as the capital expenses, my sense is they'd be happening at the tail end of fiscal year '26 and likely primarily in fiscal year '27. So we, but regardless of the, of the direction we get tonight, we ultimately can, can make those changes into our fiscal year '26 budget proposal as well. And with that, Danny, unless there's anything you'd like to add to the comments that I've just made?
No, you're about 24 months. I, when I researched some of these cities, it was about when they got approved, even when the final approval from voters came through, it was still about two years out.
I guess just one other point I think is important for our community to understand. Mr. Gallegos outlined some of the projects that are being done in some of our neighboring communities. And you heard him say that a number of those were general obligation questions that went to the voter. And Queen Creek, Queen Creek appears to be the exception. They pursued other types of financing, very likely a combination of development impact fees and the like that went into that project. But ultimately, if you're, if you're going to accelerate these types of amenities, that these types of costs, you're typically going to have to pursue some level of financing in order to get a bigger project done today versus building as you go. And with that, Madam Mayor, I'd entertain any questions.
Any questions, comments? Matt?
Yeah, so, you know, like, like most of you, I would guess, I've heard from a lot of community members, especially those with kids. And also in my, in my real life, daily life, I deal with people that are retired. And I hear from both ends, from the kids, like more fields. We travel to all these other cities all the time and it takes a lot of our time. Why can't we host them here in our town? You know, and the thing that keeps coming back, especially with them, is hey, and this gets me, is man, look what they have in Maricopa, you know? And so that's the big one we always get, I always get. And, you know, Maricopa's a lot younger city than we are as far as, as in. Um, and, you know, Maricopa is a lot younger city than we are as far as incorporation. But then their tax rates too, and I got some information here. So for a similar house in Casa Grande and Maricopa, the taxes in the Maricopa house, which is assessed at less dollars, is eighteen hundred and seventy-two dollars a year. Um, the similar one in Casa Grande is thirteen sixty-eight, so five hundred, five hundred dollars a year difference in just taxes. And that's why they have some of those things, because they do pay those higher taxes. And also their sewer and trash rates are about twenty dollars a month higher than ours are, almost thirty. So that's something to think about, you know, when you compare amenities, you have to compare everything that goes into it, you know? So we're still investing in roads and infrastructure, but this is a good way to invest in our youth and our community, because a lot of the, uh, the people I deal with, the retired community as well, they want pools. They want heated pool they can use year-round at the rec center. Our rec center is already doing gangbusters, right Danny?
Yes.
With all ages, you know? So I'm thinking that, you know, this would be a great asset to the, the rec center as well with a pool, especially heated pool for our swim teams, as well as, as the retired, the retired people that like to do their, the aerobics and everything, so they can do it more times, because I hear about when LA Fitness closed, there was a big, a big hole in the community of, of spaces to use like that.
Yeah, water rec classes are very popular for year-round pools, heated pools. So they, believe it or not, they, they fill their classes.
And you go back to the, 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 uh, community services survey, not only a pool, but heated pool was right up in the top, in the top, almost even both right there. So, um, that's what we have. And, and this is not investing in roads or this, this is all part of a big plan that I think we have as a city, um, you know, to do different things. And if we would have had a crystal ball five years ago, a lot was different, but maybe we would have done it then. But, you know, now's the time, it's not getting any, not getting any cheaper right now. And one question, Larry, do you know, I don't know if you know this, if you know, it's fine, but approximately how much it would add to the property tax?
I think it depends on ultimately how we would go about financing and what we would be asking capacity-wise. What I can say is that roughly, and this is very estimate, and again, we can, we certainly can have our financial advisors put together some specific numbers. But on fifty million dollars, if we were to issue a fifty million dollar bond at the current tax environment that we see today, that would generate, that would essentially create a fifty cent per hundred assessed value increase to service that debt. Um, so fifty cents on a hundred thousand dollars house is, uh, what would that be? Somebody help me out, my finance days.
Fifty.
Fifty dollars, right?
So an average house is, is.
And so if an average, if an average house is three hundred and fifty to four hundred, it's, it's two hundred dollars.
Two hundred dollars.
It's two hundred and fifty dollars.
So we'd still be less than a lot of our neighbors property tax-wise, which, I mean, is not something, but that's again, how all this works and how you get these amenities. Um, you know, where their, their primary tax is three sixty-four and ours is ninety-six cents, Maricopa to Casa Grande. So, and that's primary, not even secondary. So, um, you know, we, we, we have some room, but it, we hear it all the time, is investing in our community, investing in our youth. And, I mean, we've got people that have been coming to, to me and saying, hey, how can we get this done? So here's an option.
Know it, oh. No, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
One thing that I, I think the council, um, has to keep in mind and ask itself, uh, and, and by the way, I'm, I'm all for this, I, I think it's wonderful. I'll, I'll certainly be a yes vote when it comes around. But I think the other voice we hear loud and clear is road improvements and expansion. And I think the, um, the common thought that I got out, out of the budget meeting was we would likely go, uh, a bond issue paid for by property tax for the recreation improvements. And the road, uh, improvements would likely be, uh, sales tax increase to, to pay a bond. I've, I've been listening to the numbers, because I don't want to, uh, come close to, uh, outstretching our bonding capacity. Um, but I, but I think we have two, uh, two issues, two projects, and, and I think we need to at least consider that at, at this point. Like I said, I'm all for this, I'm not trying to throw cold water on it. Um, but, uh, but, but we've got a lot going on.
Madam Mayor, if I can, just build on that, and, and Councilmember Huddleston is absolutely right, uh, following the budget retreat, and we're, we're here to specifically talk about this project, so I don't necessarily want to go too far with it. But, uh, certainly the need for us to evaluate options to fund infrastructure today is going to be something that this council is going to hear about in other study sessions as well. And so I, I, I simply introduced the sales tax option as an alternative to the council, because it is, quite frankly, it is an alternative. Uh, I think under these particular scenarios, the general obligation bond is what staff has been asked to evaluate by our community. And I think, uh, as you hear, a number of communities are utilizing that option as they're, as they're financing this type of infrastructure.
Thank you. And, and I think that's a good point, Bob, what you brought up. And I, I don't want anyone to think that this is just something that we thought about last week and decided, let's do it. We have a couple of weeks to move this forward. This is something that, you know, we as a council have been talking about. We have the, the land, we've been trying to find ways to bring more of these, um, amenities to the city. Um, but it, it's difficult. And we all know the, you know, as we continue to grow, some of the challenges that we face. You know, we did the, the, um, survey, the community survey, and people are talking about roads. Um, you know, that, public safety and roads are the, the top two issues. Um, and right below that are amenities and fields, and we get it every day. So we, as a council and staff, are trying to prioritize making sure that we're maintaining low property taxes all while creating, um, you know, creative ways to, to serve our community and change services, to increase our service levels, but still keep our tax rates at, at a reasonable level here. So we know that some of these projects are difficult. So we, you know, moving forward, we know infrastructure is key. We've been investing millions in sewer, um, you know, roads, you know, all, all types of infrastructure, you know, fields in our, you know, communications department. Um, and so, and then we have another two hundred million, um, in the budget coming up here. So, um, how, how do we, you know, pay for something like this? And I think it's important for the public, I think it's important for the public to let us know. We know this is a priority, and, um, I, I, I think it's a, I think it's something that's needed. We, we hear it every day from people that are expressing, you know, the need for more fields and space for our, our young people and all, all ages, as well as, um, the, um, the pool and aquatics. So, um, so I think it's a, it's a good way to get this moving on our whole strategy of improving and, and building more infrastructure in our whole community. So, um, so yeah, so I think as far as moving forward, Larry, I don't know what you, you would need from us at this time.
Well, I just, what I'm hearing, uh, in, in combination of tonight's feedback, as well as from the discussions that we've had in other meetings, the budget treat, retreat primarily, is that, um, the idea of attempting to put a ballot measure on the November twenty twenty-five, uh, ba, um, ballot is something that you would like to pursue, and that would require the mayor and council to call in, call in election. Uh, I don't think statutorily, and I'll look at Brett when I say this, statutorily, I'm not sure council needs to do that, but it's something we typically have you do. And, uh, you would need to consider a resolution to put the actual question that describes the scope of this project and the amount that we would be pursuing, you would need to consider that, uh, at the next council meeting, May fifth. The council, uh, Penale County requires that those two items be, that they be notified by May the eighth to make the November election. And so, um, we would, if, based on what I'm hearing, we will, we will begin to work on crafting those two agenda items for the mayor and council at May the fifth for your consideration. That, and at that evening, we ultimately will present more information related to some of the financing that I talked about tonight as well.
And, and Larry, I think when we move forward too, as, as this goes out, again, I think it's important for us to show the community all of the other infrastructure that, that's moving at the same time.
Right.
You know, so it's not that it's just this one project we're asking to increase, increase property taxes. There's so much that we're currently doing, you know? Um, and, and it's important for us to outline all of that, of all the things that are happening right now and how much we're investing in all these other things. So as we put the message out and communication, it's going to be important to do that.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions?
No.
Okay. Okay, next item, sorry, no, twenty minutes for the next one. Um, we have a question here, is that okay?
No, it's a study session.
Madam Mayor, it, it is, it is a study session, but the pleasure of the council to, to field the questions.
I, I think it's fine if you have a question, I don't know if we can answer, but go ahead.
You need to come up to them, yeah.
Can you, can you come up to the microphone?
Get a person mic.
Yes. Can you give us your name and your address too?
I'm Sandy, and I live at one eight seven five East Kachina Drive.
Okay.
And, um, I am thrilled that you're considering indoor heated pool. I taught water aerobics at LA Fitness for ten years, and it has closed a few years ago. And the only indoor pool is in Chandler that we could use. Um, and I, I taught water aerobics and a lot of senior citizens and people. And the swimming is just, not for physical, it's also for people's mental health. And also a social thing that they get to meet people. And I've never been at a pool where you don't see people smiling, you know? And I know I go to the beautiful aquatic center we have now, the outdoor one, is fantastic, you know? And I go there very much. And, uh, I just, I'm thrilled that this is going to be up for a vote. And we've been, my students have been waiting for this for so long.
Thank you, but I know the, the, the concept that is on there is not an indoor, it's not indoors, is that correct, Danny? As far as the design?
That is correct, all, all the valley pools are, are outdoor facility, but heated.
Heated, but not.
Same with Maricopa and all the other pools, Scottsdale, Mesa, they're all heated pools.
Okay.
Year-round.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Another quick question. You give us your name and address really quick.
Name's Eric Rivera, seventeen fifty East Okatowa Drive, Casa Grande, Arizona. Um, I just wanted to ask, I mean, what information can we get out to the public? I mean, just like what, what this lady just said, uh, the aquatic center, my aunt. We, uh, own a insurance business here for forty-eight years. And my aunt, one of our workers, actually has to drive up to Chandler to the indoor facility, because she used to go to that one. So I know how hard that is, but, uh, for the fields-wise, um, I know it's a big, uh, a big budget, but I just ask you guys to think about, you know, unfortunately, I've been in this community all my life, for good and for bad. So I know that, so the, I know how important it is to have youth sports here. Um, there's not many youth sports, especially for girls, there's not a lot of them. Uh, all the fields, once they get up to the older league, there's not, there's not a specific girls soccer league here. There's, um, so they all have to share the fields, softball and baseball, we have to share the fields. Um, you have Cal Ripken, you have, um, Babe Ruth, you have Little League, then you have your softball teams. And most of us have to go out of town to coach our girls. Um, I just need to know what we need to do as a community to get it out there. Um, and then also to take into account if our girls and our kids are out there playing football. And as much as we're growing, we're growing at, at such a substantial rate. We got more kids than we have fields or things for them to do. And I always tell Matt and a couple of other people that if kids, we don't have things for kids to do, there're just gonna be more problems for our police officers. And I don't know about you, but I don't want the police raising my kids. Um, I would like for something for them to do. Um, and there's just, youth sports, um, generates, not only does it, uh, generate, um, accountability, but it also teaches teamwork, it strengthens self-confidence, uh, and everything so that they can do better and come back to our community and get to college and be productive citizens. So just so you guys know that if you just let us know what we gotta do as a community, um, to get that out there.
Do you want to tell them as far as what people can do?
Well, Madam Mayor, what I would, what I would encourage is for perhaps them to attend the May fifth regular meeting, that'll be during the regular meeting.
That would be helpful.
And we can ultimately, uh, there are some specific regulations, and I'll let the city attorney, Mr. Wallace, go into more depth if we'd like to, but there are some specific regulations. I think that if there's a group of individuals that want to support this, it's best that they, uh, perhaps meet with our city clerk and just understand what may need to be necessary um, for them to, to be supportive of this.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Sure. Really quick, we have our next, our next study session here. Give us your name really quick.
Sal Della Centro, five one four East Dragon Springs. Um, I just want to bring up the economic impact that, um, a lot of these, I go to, uh, I work, I've dealt with Danny for quite a while and dealing with the fields. It is a pain to, to get fields here, unfortunately. I represent over, just under a hundred girls here, um, club softball. But the economic impact, I deal with Danny's counterparts in nine other cities, in Mesa, Tempe, um, in Maricopa. And the economic impact that it's bringing in at Legacy and at Rose Mofford and all the other facilities on a, on a weekend basis, um, it's gonna be big for the city of Casa Grande. I know that a lot of these tournament directors, they're trying to get into these other cities. So us putting a facility like this, just on the baseball softball side, having perfect game and PGF and Alliance, Triple Crown, these other, uh, you know, these, these organizations that come in, um, that's something also to leverage, to be able to, you know, to utilize, that the public needs to know about as well. And along with the softball stuff, or, uh, the soccer stuff, it's huge as well. Um, and the economic impact is gonna, is gonna help our local businesses.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Please, please come to the meeting next, the, I'll make it. Okay, we're gonna go ahead and close this one and move on to the next, the next study session.
And Madam Mayor, if I can, make, uh, an introduction of, I, of Lieutenant Scott Shervin and, um, our supervisor, Sharice Shanafelt. Uh, I know the mayor and council is aware of a lot of the work that's been going on in our animal care and adoption center. And, uh, I felt that we had, had made some strides that ought to be, uh, outlined to the mayor and council in a formal presentation. So I'll hand it over to these two to go through their, their presentation.
Hi, um, for those that have not met her yet, to my right is Sharice Shanafelt, she's our animal control supervisor. And to begin with, let's see if I can get this right, okay, I started off on a good note then. Um, our animal control staffing, currently, we have one full-time animal control supervisor, three full-time ACO officers, a kennel tech, uh, two part-time kennel techs and two volunteers. Uh, currently, we have one opening, and, uh, if everything goes right, we're also gonna have another, uh, position added for animal control officer in, uh, in July. And in May, we are doing, um, interviews for animal control officer, and we're hoping that we'll be able to fill both those positions off that list. As of February, we started with the DocuPet and online licensing. Thanks for, to Chief McCroy for that, because he didn't like going down to animal control and physically having to get his, uh, license down there. And it is, it's, it's much easier to do this online now. So in February, we started this, and our hopes is, is that we'll have more people become compliant with our animal licensing, uh, to make it easier for them to be able to get animal licenses. And in addition to the animal licenses, they can also get their dog tags, they can get designer tags, and they can even get like GPS tags. And it also provides different things where, um, it's like a twenty-four seven hotline where you can call in if your dog is lost. And, um, if anybody finds that, they can call that in. Like if you find a lost dog and you see this dog tag and you call it in, um, they can notify the owner that, hey, your dog's been found. Um, our initiatives, uh, we already discussed the, uh, online licensing. Uh, I want to thank Heather, uh, or PIO, CDPIO, she's helped us greatly with the media campaign and marketing. Uh, redesigned our logo that you saw on the first slide, and we're in the process of, um, getting new uniforms in to, uh, 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 highlight those, uh, logos. And, uh, we also got them new badges. Um, I'm sure, uh, Chief Huddleston, I'm sorry, Councilman Huddleston remembers the old badges that they had. Um, so they're getting a completely new look. Um, and, uh, our PIO is highlighting some of the events that we're doing to try to get the word out when we're doing, uh, TNR, which is, uh, trap neuter and release and, and, uh, some of our, uh, medical procedures we do for the animals as far as spay and neuter, and also some of the adoption events. And we also try to get out at Public Safety Day and, uh, the Fourth of July, just to get out there and meet and greet with the public. One of our big things that, uh, Sharice actually was involved in is building relationships with our, uh, rescues around the state. They have helped us tremendously as far as being able to take some of our animals that otherwise would have not been adopted. Uh, the only issue that we have with that is, um, just like them, they only have so much room. So, and they're, and we're competing. that is, just like them, they only have so much room. So, and they're, and we're competing with all the other animal shelters in the state to be able to get, to get those turned over. We're striving to continue to improve on our animal save rate. And in 2024, our save rate was 80%. And so far this year, we're at 97%. ACO is one of the things that we started, I believe it was roughly two years ago. Everybody once they're off probation is required to become ACO 1 and ACO 2 certified online training through a National Animal Control Association. And we're also, they're also required to go to online and do a practical for euthanasia before they actually start participating in that. Another one that I really want to highlight is we're the second agency in the state to be licensed under the Arizona State Vet Program. Basically, to get our different types of drugs, you know, you get usually a veterinarian. Well, we're licensed under the state. They had to come down and actually do an audit of our facilities. We weren't that far off, but they had us change some of our documentation, documentation and such. And now we are operating under their guidelines. And then they come down once a year and they audit us to make sure that we're following those guidelines. And so we operate underneath the state vet. So that was a big accomplishment by Sharice to get that done. CIP projects, the current ones, I'll start with the security cameras. We currently have those being installed as we speak. The need for those was, unfortunately, we were having people come to the animal control facility. And once in a while, we would get criminal damage. But more concerning to us was people that would come during the weekend or overnight, especially during the summertime when it's hot, and they would just tie up animals outside. And, and they would be unsupervised. And with these cameras, they should be able to send an alert if we got movement so we can check. And if we see somebody doing that, we can, you know, either one of them can respond, or one of the officers can go grab the animal and take them inside the shelter. The new animal control vehicle, we're due for replacement. The issue we ran into that is the box for the animal control truck, that was 16 months backlog for the build. So right now, we got it pushed back, and it looks like December or January of later this year is when that box is going to be completed, where we can actually start the build. Then the big one that we had was install AC units into the kennel and to the cat room. As Larry just stated earlier, prices have gone up, and we were hoping to do a couple of other things to the front office. But due to construction increased costs and the fact that these AC units aren't just regular commercial ones, they have to recirculate air more often than regular AC units, those costs went up. So we're hoping to get that. And it's, we're in the process of getting bids to take a look at having those installed. And hopefully, in the next three to four weeks, we'll get those bids and be able to see where we're at. The other thing that we worked with, with the PIO, or actually sheeted it all, is the Muro project. We're getting that ready to go. And we got some meetings scheduled, I think, later this week or is it this week?
I think it's this week.
Yeah, it's this week to be able to get that, that project kicked off. ACO kennel capacity, this is actually an important slide. I'm not going to go over too, too much of the first couple of things, because everybody knows our city is growing and it's going to keep growing. But we have 46 kennels and 77 kennels for cats. And if you look at the average number of dogs in our kennels was 49 in 2024, highest count being 55. And then with the cats, it was 38, with the highest being 85. In 2025, so far, we're running with 52 dogs in the kennel and the highest count being 53. So we're regularly running at or above capacity. And I'll actually be discussing something in just a couple of minutes as far as what we're looking for in that area. Community engagement in 20, these are just an example of some of the events that we went out that I talked about. We had Community Safety Day, Paw Perfect grooming and adoption event, Crossroads Church adoption event, Tractor Supply adoption events, low cost vaccine clinics. And so you can see that list, you know, I'm trying to save some time. You can see some of the other events that we've done. And in 2025, we've got Community Safety Day. I think that already came and went. And we got some other things scheduled as well. Calls for service, when you look at, we have, we've had an increase of calls for service, which actually come with the increase of population from 2023, 12,800. And 2023, 2024, it went up. And you can also see our first quarter. And you can also see our licenses sold. And when we talk about overall calls for service, we're not just talking about people that call into our dispatch center. These are people that actually call directly into animal control and our walk-ins. And once, and that also, if we get some inquiries via email at that point in time. Total impounds, 2023, we had 835. 2024, we had 1175. And so far this year, 195. And the important slide here is our rescues. 465 relayed to rescues in 2023, 2024, 525, I'm sorry, 524. And so far this first quarter, 102 sent to rescues. Those rescues really do make a difference. Next slide is total adoptions. And the unfortunate slide is total euthanized. It's a necessary evil. I know a lot of people want animal control to be a no kill shelter, but that's almost impossible to do because you do have to deal with sick, injured animals. And also you have to deal with vicious and animals that have attacked people. And that's one of the rules that we have at animal control is we are not going to adopt an animal that comes into our facility that has attacked a person. Next slide, we do the total TNR, trap neuter and release. These are for cats. And we're hoping to be able to increase that because one of the things that we found is, you know, you can't just go in and remove cats and either send them to a rescue or, or, or euthanize them at that point in time because they're territorial. If you've got a group of cats in an area that's already working as a team, they're going to keep other cats out. So to be able to control the population better is the TNR. And we do that mostly through grants at this point in time, through our low cost clinics. Citations and warnings, those are self-explanatory. And if anybody's wondering why our citations are low, it's because we usually only cite people who are chronic offenders because from animal control's perspective, we believe in education. This, this one here, our future CAIP projects, one is paving the back parking lot. It's looking a little rough, the, our side that didn't get paved. In the back to the west of the kennel facility, we have an open piece of land next to our other outdoor runs. We'd like to add some more kennels and, or dog runs there to be able to exercise more animals. And what we're also looking for is a new combined and office building to be built just west of the current facility because we have property just to the west of it. And it would be best to keep the, anything that was built in the future on the same property so staff doesn't have to go to two different locations. Plus those dog runs that we want to increase, if the building is built in that location, we'd be able to use those dog runs for both facilities. And to leave with that, I just want to say thank you for your time. And we appreciate everybody's efforts when it comes to animal control. Any questions at this point, or Larry?
Questions? Comments? I just want to thank you for everything. And you know, these, those numbers are just surprising to me. You have 16,000 total calls last year is just amazing. But, but no, we, we see the work you do. You know, it's definitely a challenge. I know that, do you work with, I, I know there's that Facebook page that has Casa Grande lost and found dogs, or is that what it's called? Something like that. Do you, do you work with whoever manages that site or anything? Because I know there's a lot of communication going back and forth with lost dogs. And it's been really, really helpful. I know I found a dog and took it home and posted it on there, and the people found it like within an hour. So do you work with the person that has that site?
We try to stay off Facebook.
Okay.
For everybody's sake.
Right, right, okay.
But we do, we do peruse it quite a bit. So, you know, if we see that we have a dog that's lost on there, we find a way to get that voice to those people.
Okay. As long as you're monitoring it. Because I know it is, it is very helpful. Are, are, you, you know, you had the growth in this city. Are we way higher than most cities? Or is that just how it is across all cities nowadays? Especially after COVID? Because I heard after COVID, some of the numbers were increasing in kennels. Is that correct?
Well, one of the things right after kennel, the unfortunate truth is a lot of, or a lot of people that got animals to keep themselves company while they were at home, got rid of their animals and, and abandoned them at that point in time. But we haven't done a study to comparable cities as far as their numbers.
Yeah. I was just curious if you knew. So no, thank you. And when it comes to outreach, please check out the dog park. There's so many dog lovers are there, even if we put some type of closed in case, you know, that shows pictures of dogs that are up for adoption.
Great of you.
And you know, there's, there's regulars that go there. There's people that are visiting, new people to town. So I think that's, those are people that love dogs. So, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And so nice to meet you. Thank you for being here. So we'll get, go ahead and close. Should we break for maybe five minutes or so? So we'll go ahead and break for five minutes.